Did I understand you all ready, or are we waiting on something?
We're, yeah, we're almost linked up to Facebook.
Okay.
Okay, ready when you are.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and get started with this, uh, Galton Municipal Regional Planning Commission work session. The, uh, work session for Monday, September fourteenth will be held remotely. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the, uh, notice. Let me read a short statement pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order number sixteen, number thirty-four, number fifty-one, and number sixty, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID- nineteen. Members of the planning commission will participate by electronic means and the meeting will be live streamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Galton. This is not a voting meeting, it's a work session, but we will hold one vote, and that is a vote to hold this meeting by electronic means. So, when your name is called, please respond by saying, uh, present and approve, approve of holding it by electronic means. Marian, will you go through the role?
President.
Present and approve.
Vice Chair Harris.
Present and approve.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh, present and approve.
Councilman Fennell.
Present and approve.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Present and approve.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We have, uh, six items to cover on the work session plus some other business, and don't go away afterwards, we have training. Um, so, we'll start with item number one, which is Greensboro, uh, North PUD, a PUD revision, and, uh, just handling that item, Dustin.
Yes, Dustin Shane, Galton Planning Department. So, this is the Greensboro North, uh, specific plan, uh, transit-ready development. Uh, what they're doing, you can see there where it's located, it's east and west of Greenlee Boulevard, north of Nashville Pike, and south of three eighty-six. Um, so first, the bottom line upfront on this one, uh, this was approved back in twenty twelve. Um, this is not, ninety-nine percent of this plan has already been approved. They're making a few tweaks here and there, and they're wanting to extend it south closer to Nashville Pike. Um, so you can see here on the screen, this was kind of the vision, um, that they have, looking south from three eighty-six. And here on the screen, on the left side, is the original map that they presented and got approved. On the right side is the, what they're proposing now. Um, so you can see on the left, the Greensboro North Commercial used to be, uh, basically big box, Tennessee of parking. Um, if you look, I don't know if you can see my cursor, that area there is, uh, currently zoned MRO PUD. It's part of the Greensboro Village PUD. They want to rezone that to SP. This northern part is already zoned SP and has a form-based zoning code, uh, specific to it, that's already approved, and they just want to extend that south to this, the south forty-seven acres down here. Um, the, the plan itself, the original plan, it includes three different sub-districts, Village Center, Village, and Village Edge. Um, Village Center is the main, you know, business, mixed-use residential area, uh, that can be pretty dense. And like I said, this is all already approved, so, um, forty units per acre is already approved for that northern part. Um, it's a form-based zoning, it's, it's basically, uh, regulating how the buildings can look, and, um, the only difference they have now, uh, to these districts is that they've eliminated the, the front setback, they had a mandatory front setback, um, a few years back, and they're just eliminating that, so that's going to allow more flexibility as to where the buildings are placed. Um, it will allow it to take on more of that urban feel, which is very important to developments like this. Um, next district would be the Village, Village District, so that's kind of like your step down, so it kind of tiers down as you get out further from the center of it. And then Village is more just residential. We do have a question for the applicant about, um, possibly, it says that there's some commercial uses on corners. We're planning for this district, but when we go to the use tables here, um, we don't see that, that any commercial uses were approved. If you look on the, the lightest brown column there, that's all, it's all not approved, or not permitted. Uh, but you can see, this is how a form-based code works, you've got a lot of different uses, and, um, it's more about regulating the look and the feel than it is about saying what you can do in each building. Um, so they've got a phasing plan, uh, this is subject to change, though. Um, with, with this new change, this new rezone part down here would be one of the final pieces to develop. And, uh, for utilities, they want to do, the wet utilities under the street and the dry ones on the backside with the alleys. Uh, they want to have a, they want to have street trees, and they don't want to have anything that could crowd that out, so. Um, anyways, like I said, uh, there's nothing, there's nothing new about the form-based aspect, it's just that they want to extend it south, so, thank you.
Yeah, do we have a representative for the applicant online?
April, uh, I have unmuted you, and if you let me know, there's anyone else from your team that's here on the call.
I think Mike Rye was supposed to be on as well, and possibly the client, um, Anderson Green. But I, I'm, I can speak, I can speak for the project.
Okay.
I am here as well, April.
Oh, you're here, okay. Um, Dustin was correct, this is, uh, a form-based document, and we're just asking for the small, the small revision for that commercial to be added to the plan. The, um, Village Center is, is what we would, um, like for that to be zoned, and uh, including, you know, the hu, the higher density. It is a conceptual document at this point, and, um, for a lot of staff's comments, um, we'd like to respond that it is conceptual, and then once it goes to, through the PMD process, the city's regulating documents will, um, will regulate, you know, what, what that review, what the design will be. At this point, we really don't know what's going to be in there, so this is really more of a conceptual, uh, form-based document. And so, a lot of our, um, sub-districts and road networks are, can, can be flexible, and that's kind of what this document allows for you to do. Mike, do you have anything to add on that?
I think you covered it, I think if there are any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer.
Uh, do we have any questions, uh, for the applicant or for members of staff?
I, I'd like to say something, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman.
So, this land, this is already permitted back in two thousand twelve, long before I was around the city. I understand that. This road is the road that, uh, it wasn't just a county road back in the day, this road was developed by LA Green. Um, and he put a lot of plan, a lot of effort in this road, and I think I talked to LA about it, and he said he had visions of doing this road starting back into the nineteen eighties. Um, and also, I think the state picked up on some of it and helped with the funding of that road also. This whole road, this whole area, Mr. Purrier, I'm, I'm asking you this, this whole area is planned for mixed-use and high-density area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um.
This whole, this whole plan concept was really, um, kind of a trailblazer, it was one of the first SP districts, well, it was our first SP district, and I can tell you that we looked at it thoroughly when this came through, and their internal, um, requirements are tougher than the city's requirements would have been on it, so it's, it's going to look nice. And as I understand it, the reason that they're making this change is that that large parcel down towards Nashville Pike was supposed to be a big-box store, but there hasn't been a big-box deal in a very long time. They're just not building targets and stuff, so I'm in favor of this, it's, it's moving more residential.
I remember back in the day, and I might be wrong on my dates, but I was a county commissioner, um, I remember, uh, when they done the dedication for Greenlee Boulevard, uh, and put the trailer up out there and had a lot of dignitaries, and I remember LA, that was the first time that, that I remember the opening of the road, and I think that was actually done in like two thousand and six, seven, or eight, somewhere in there. But I just want to point that out because a lot was spun up on the internet that wasn't correct, like we was approving this thing tonight, when actually, this is a continuation of a plan design that was done in two thousand and twelve, that's where I, that's the point I was coming to.
My, my question, I, I think, I think, John, I think you answered it, the, the, it sounds like the driving force of, of the addition of the, the North Commercial is the, it seems, for now anyway, the days of the big-box retail stores are, are on the way out, so it, it just doesn't make sense anymore, is that, is that the, the main motivation?
I think that's my perception.
This is Mike Rye, if I could, and you're exactly right, it's, um, the Amazon effect, call it what you like. Um, but the target-centered, or the target-anchored center was presented to Galton, if I remember correctly, in two thousand and five, fifteen years ago, and in that time, we've seen Indian Lake Village, for example, uh, struggle maybe a little bit with, um, the effect, and most of the, what we call power centers in the day have been struggling. Um, retail in general, unless it's, uh, experiential in nature, is, is struggling, so, yes, we think this is, uh, more realistic plan for the development of the property, we just don't think big box ever comes back.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I'm, I'm in favor of, of not doing big box on that corner and having something that's more attractive in the, uh, for commercials, so it's, uh, it looks good from our side.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill, uh, Cord. Uh, I want to point out that the extreme southerly portion of the property of the Greensboro, uh, PUD will remain MRO. That, those are the properties that essentially face Nashville Pike, and it's just an area north of that area that will be changed, and that's adjacent to the Community College, really in a triangle shape between the Community College property on the east and Greenlee Boulevard on the west. What we will do, though, is, uh, at the, at the meeting or in the staff report, we will identify what was previously approved, or what's approved on that property now. Again, it, it's several big boxes with your typical regional shopping center type uses, similar to what I guess they have over in, uh, Hendersonville, where, um, they have Kroger and Stein Mart and Target and several other large stores over there. It was intended to be something like that, so we can provide that information to you as well, so you can make a comparison.
Yeah, and I can, I can tell you right now, it was, uh, what was slated for that area was a million forty-four thousand square feet of commercial. And you can see on the map there, kind of the preliminary site plan that was, that was laid out, and it was very much a tradi, a traditional big box with, you know, the sea of parking around it, and strip centers, so.
Okay, and, and I'm sure my question, I, I have one question, and I'm sure it would be addressed at a later stage in this, but there is a cemetery on the, that triangle, or piece of property towards the very top of that triangle, uh, has that already been dealt with, or is that something that has to be worked into any plan? Because it was dealt with on the big-box preliminary site plan.
We, we've looked at, this is April Anderson, we've looked at that previously and doing some site planning for the client. Um, what, when we get an end user for that section, we'll look at that again, um, when we submit for a PB, PMDP.
Fair enough. Well, any other questions? If, if not, I think you have pretty good indication, everybody's in favor of this, so we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a matter of principle, I think they should preserve the cemetery and not try to move it.
Dr. Organe, it's been several years, uh, it's been several years. I'm not sure, I know an archaeologist was retained to study the area, and some steps were taken toward providing reports to SHPO. I can't remember honestly, and, and our office has actually moved twice since that was done, I will research it. Um, I'm not certain, I guess what I'm saying, it, it may have been moved already, but I don't know.
Okay.
I, I tend to think it's been moved already, Dr. Organe, because that was the Bailey Peyton Cemetery. Well, Bailey Peyton's not buried there, but that was the Bailey Peyton place, and I remember that was a big, um, uh, point of discussion on the initial site plan. Um, item number two is Kensington Row at Kensington Downs, a final plat from Civil Site Design Group, and Jillian, you're presenting this?
Yes, Jillian Ogden, Staff Planner, next slide, please. So, this is Kensington Row, uh, this is going to be incorporated into the Kensington Downs development, uh, and this is the final plat for this portion, it includes, uh, twenty-six lots and a commercial out parcel on five-point-three-two acres. It's located along Greenlee, north of Vietnam Veterans. Uh, so this will be the development that connects Kensington Downs into the Liberty Creek Development to the north. Um, so, uh, they're already moving dirt out there and, and starting to get those ready to construct, um, but this is just the final plat, so, um, pretty routine. Thank you.
Thank you, I keep, I have the mute button on. Um, do we have a representative for the applicant, present?
Jim Harrison, your line's been unmuted.
Uh, this is Jim Harrison, just here to answer any questions of native.
Hey, you're.
Routine, check out, we say staff help, staff help, we'll do this.
Jim, I'll just let you know, we had some technical difficulties there, and we really didn't catch anything you said, but was the summary of it is that it's, um, um, pretty routine, no changes, uh, you're here to answer any questions?
I think we may have lost them altogether.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Yes.
That, that was a, that was a jest of it, pretty routine, yes, sir.
Okay. So, does then, uh, does anyone have any questions on this?
I didn't have any questions on this, this was pretty routine and consistent, but it's already been approved, so I don't see problems with it.
Any others? Saying none, I think that, um, we'll, we'll see this back in a couple of weeks, and it looks pretty routine, so, not an issue. Um, thank you, Jim. We'll move on to item number three, which is, oh, thank you. Item number three, which is racetrack, uh, number thirteen fifty, it's an alternative sign approval. Um, Jillian, are you presenting this item?
Yes, Jillian Ogden, Staff Planner, next slide, please. This is for the proposed racetrack to be located at Highway one oh nine in Nichols Lane. Um, the site plan, uh, was approved earlier this year. Next slide, please. Uh, and the sign that we will be talking about is on your screen, it's a letter N, so it is their monument sign on Highway one oh nine. They are requesting an exception to the sign code, which only allows an eight-foot-tall sign for all freestanding signs. Also, an exception to the digital sign portion of the code, which doesn't permit digital signs or digital features on signs over eight feet. Next slide, please. So, this is the proposed sign, it is, uh, the same style as the one that's located at the other racetrack on Nashville Pike. Um, and the sign itself wouldn't change size, uh, but they are wanting it to be twelve feet instead of eight feet. Um, and they did provide some exhibits to explain, and there are a couple people on this call who can better explain what the issues are. Um, the site, as it sits now, sits above the street, if, because the gas station hasn't been constructed yet, but when it is built, a lot of the dirt within the site will be removed, and the building and the parking lot will sit below the street. If you go to the next slide. Um, so, they've, they've tried to illustrate how they believe they will have some visibility issues with their sign. Um, this shows, the top one shows if they installed an eight-foot-tall sign, the bottom one shows a twelve-foot-tall sign. Again, the sign itself doesn't increase size, but it would be taller. Um, they have a number of obstacles with this site, as you might be familiar, um, there is a TVA easement on the southern side of the site, which they cannot put their sign in that. Um, they also have a number of slope, uh, issues throughout this site, this, this site will be sitting much lower than the street once it is actually built versus now, where it sits higher. Um, and so, as I am to understand it, the sign kind of sits into the slope, um, which, th, this image doesn't show that super well, I think they're going to provide me with some updated ones on Thursday. Um, and so, with the, part of the sign will be lower than the street, which doesn't give them a lot of height, so there, you can't see the pricing from, um, for a car driving by. Again, staff is still reviewing this request, and we are working with the applicant to, to ensure that they have exhausted all other options for a visible monument sign. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. So, this kind of shows, they provided this section to me today to kind of illustrate what kind of slope issues they are having. Not only does the sidewalk need a proposed handrail because of the slope, um, they're already going to be sitting lower than the street itself. Um, so, they believe that the visibility of the sign will only be the top three feet of it, if they're only allowed an eight-foot-tall sign. Um, again, uh, next slide, please. And this kind of shows you what's going on with the grading at this location. Um, again, we, we have encouraged the applicant to exhaust all options before having to come for an alternative sign, and staff is still reviewing this for the staff recommendation, um, but that is their request at this time, and, uh, they're, both the engineer and the, um, person associated with Racetrack are on the call, uh, so they can also add to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you are representing this item, if you could let me know by, uh, using the raise your hand function, uh, I know several people, there we go.
And Matt, and Matt, yeah, those Victor and Matt.
Victor and Matt.
Mm-hmm.
Your lines have been unmuted.
Thanks, Jillian, uh, this is Matt Reginald, with CESO, uh, appreciate it, uh, don't really have too much to add. Jillian did a great job presenting this, the really, the, you know, the, we have really looked at all the options that we can come up with for moving the sign on site, like Jillian noticed, you know, said, the TVA easement on the other side of our drive, um, further down, uh, one oh nine is, is really the restricting factor there, and then this is kind of our last corner we have to be able to put a sign there on one oh nine, and be, due to grading, we're putting this sign kind of in a little corner, and it's on about a three-to-one slope. So, measuring that, if we're looking inside the site, we would have, you know, full eight feet of view from the canopy side, but when we go over to the street, we're sitting, the street's sitting up about three, three-and-a-half feet higher than where our canopy sits, so when you're at the street level, you're cutting off a lot of that sign, first off, and then because of the traffic signal box, and because of the, the handrail there that we're having to install, it really blocks the visibility of the actual, uh, the fuel pricing section of the sign, so that's the main intent while we're coming here, we're really just wanting to see if we can get a variance to say that, hey, can we get eight feet from kind of that high elevation, which is really the street grade, to be able to bring that view up so that people have a better view coming, you know, south on one oh nine, so that they have a better decision point, instead of, you know, coming up right on it and having that blocked view, and having to make a split second if they decide they want to make that, due to being able to see the, um, the prices of the gas.
Thank you, Stu, did you have any other information you wish to add?
Victor, do you have anything else?
Okay, well, seeing none, then, does anyone, um, have any questions for the applicant's representative or for staff?
Yeah, a question for staff, Jillian, were the signs located, you know, this is the, the job we went around and around for several months over the access on the Highway one oh nine, and, you know, if, if that right turn-in didn't exist, would they not have had a lot more options of where to put their sign?
Um, Dustin, can you go back one slide? One more.
Yeah.
So, um, oh, too much.
Yeah, that, if that right entrance wasn't, yeah, the sidewalk would essentially, I guess, continue down one oh nine like it does to the, you know, on other properties, so wouldn't they have been able to put the sign out closer to the road, and then this wouldn't be a problem?
So, yeah, the turn lane does kind of encroach into the site, um, and that was a consequence of, of getting the, the entrance onto one oh nine. Um, so I guess, yes, theoretically, there would be more room.
Well, I, so, so if they, you know, so one solution is to be if they, you know, just eliminated that right turn-in into the, uh, to the property, they could have lots of room to put their sign where they wouldn't need a variance. I mean, would that work?
They would have more room in that instance, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I guess my, my comment on this is, is pretty simple, I mean, we, we went round and round on the access to one oh nine, engineering didn't like it. We ultimately let them do it, and now they've created for themselves a problem with visibility for their own sign, so I, you know, it seems like a problem they've created for themselves, because I can look at it.
Man, I'll just jump in and, and say that you said it perfectly, better than I could have, um, because when I first saw this, I was thinking that this access off of one oh nine has been a point we have struggled with, it's in direct contradiction of our access corridor management, our corridor access management plan agreed upon with TDOT, and so, the creation of this right in, right out has created the, or quote, created the hardship, which is the only reason to grant a variance.
If, 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 if the, if the, if the entrance to one oh nine goes away, then there is no hardship, so, I mean, it's, I don't know, you can have a hardship when the applicant created it.
Yeah, I'm not favorable to this.
Chairman, um, as Jillian had mentioned, we, we have, we're still reviewing this plan and looking for potential alternatives to this location that's shown in, on the screen there, and as the letter N. It might be possible, and I'm not sure if it's included in the TVA easement or not, I think the TVA easement is only those lines that are identified, uh, on the striped pattern, that essentially go from, uh, top-left to, uh, lower-right on the westerly portion, and centered on the power line. The, the ones that are the box pattern, that's just to the north of that, uh, extends through the, most of the parking lot on the south side of the building, and includes just part of that driveway connection on the one oh nine. There might be a possibility to place that sign, uh, in that location south of that driveway. It, it also might be a little easier to, to visualize as you're traveling south on, uh, South Water Avenue, um, to catch that, uh, it would be past the driveway, but, uh, being that it's an illuminated sign with the changeable message, it, it's, it's quite visible, particularly at night, so that, that might be another al, alternative location that might work for them, improve their site visibility, and, um, also, provided that it's not in the TVA power easement.
Bill, are you talking about just? Bill, are you talking about just south of the driveway to 109?
Yeah.
That little hole?
I think, I can't read the numbers there, but I think one of them is a four and one might be an 18 or 19. There, there is, as y'all remember, this whole site is crisscrossed with all kinds of different types of easements, which can create some issues for them and has created issues for them. But I'm not sure there's a restriction on being able to place a sign in that area that's shown in the crosshatched area as opposed to just the single diagonal hatched area, which is the TVA easement.
And Mr. McCord, I, I recognize that the easements that are on the property caused problems, but those, those easements were there when they purchased the property and decided to put a service station on it. So.
Yeah.
I mean, so hopefully they can find a better alternative where to put their sign.
Well, Bill, I, I like your alternative as far as being a viable alternative. I don't think the applicant's going to be very favorable to it because they want their sign as close to the intersection as possible for nearsighted people like me that are sitting still in the intersection. But, but I agree with you that that's a viable alternative that would not require a variance.
Well, they also, since they're on a corner lot, they're also eligible to have a separate detached sign on Nichols Lane if, if they wish to put one there. If you go back and you look at some of the sketches that were provided, I can't remember if they're before this, this image or after.
They're probably after.
Okay. There's schematic drawings that try to give you an impression of what it would look like. There we go. Yeah. And that's looking from essentially the middle of the intersection towards where the store will be. I think it's kind of a exaggeration of the utility box there. It's really not that big, that tall. It almost makes it look like the utility box is 15 feet tall, but it's not that big. So I don't think it obscures the store or will obscure the store nearly as much as shown here. There, there will be a slope because they're excavating a lot of that property. That's now essentially hits, it's up higher than the road. But you, you don't get a good idea because they don't show far enough down the road of what the site distance would look like traveling from South Water to the area, just to the south of the driveway. So this one doesn't show it. But the other image, I think it's the next one, shows a sight line. If I'm not sure which, I think it's bad, you know, this one here. So they show sight lines for car with standard three and a half foot height, the sitting height. So you can see that, that line extends down. And what we would want to see is if they were to place that on the new slope, just past the driveway, where that, so those sight lines would be. And keep it in mind, the speed limit, I think on here is 45 miles an hour. So that, that's a possibility that we need to look at as well.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
One thing I did want to say, when Bill was pointing out the utility box location, when I first saw it, I thought it was the, the conceptual design of the sign. And then I saw the sign a little bit further down. So that's usually placements where you see it with a utility box would be up that farther, but I just want to make that point.
We've thrown out a lot of comments. In all fairness to the applicant, I just wondered if the applicant would like to respond to any of the comments or ask any additional questions or give us any more information.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I cut out there for a little while. I was trying to answer something earlier on, but I don't think Victor from Racetrack can be heard. But to really, you know, from, from our standpoint, what we see is, you know, we, we looked at the other side of that drive and, you know, we can relook and see, but we do have a lot of the, part of that problem is we have a lot of stormwater drainage just on the south side there of our other, our connection on 109. So we'll just have to see if that can even fit because of those utility connections are real shallow. And then of course, TVA, we can't be in there at all. So we've got a real small window. We can touch base, look back at that again. I know from conversations at Racetrack, their main desire really is to get it up on this front corner. Kind of like the last time it was made, you know, thinking this, this sign would have been right there on the one corner. You wouldn't need two signs either down Nichols or 109 is the reason why we intended to kind of come to this corner. But really, we're trying to, you know, trying to work with staff to come up with this best location to, to make it work. Because I think losing that connection to 109 really loses Racetrack a lot of access to their site. And I don't know if we really proceed forward there because that's, that's kind of their main driver and their main force of where people will be coming from. They see is coming off of 109, they're coming south. So that's the main reason why they, they fought so hard to get that and keep that and to make it work for everybody. So, you know, we'll continue to work with staff on this to see what we can come up with to find the best solution possible to try and get this to work.
All right. Well, if there's no other comments.
I got a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wilson.
Is there a reason why that area where the sidewalk is and the sign couldn't be filled in and leveled, leveled off with the rest of it?
We can look into that. It would, part of that, the reason why it is, the way it is, is because of the ADA grades, just trying to achieve a lot of that. So I'll have to take back a look at the grading and everything with Racetrack just to see maybe what we can do. I don't, I can't say, not saying we can't, not saying we can either. So, but I'll definitely take a look at that.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Saying none, we'll, we'll see this back in a couple of weeks and we'll move on to item four. Jillian, do you want to present items four and five together or separately?
Together, please.
Okay, items four and five are Villas on the Green Phase One. Item five is Villas on the Green Phase Two A. Go ahead, Jillian.
Uh, yes. Next slide, please. Uh, so this is the Villas on the Greens development. You are familiar with it. It's currently under construction. And we have two phases that have been platted, Phase One, which is on the right-hand side of, of your screen and Phase Two A, which is on the left-hand side. Next screen, please. So this is, uh, there are some minor changes that they're needing to do to their plaits that are currently reported, recorded. They will be changing all the address numbers, just the numbers, not the street names. They've already worked with E911 for their new numbering scheme. Their previous numbering scheme included letters and they wanted a different one to just include numbers. So that's a pretty minor change. And then they are reconfiguring the front entry into the development for some better maneuvering. If you go to the next slide, please. The way they're going to configure is so that if a car can't get through the gate for some reason, they'll easily be able to turn around and go out to Nashville Pike without having to back up or anything hazardous like that. This will affect lot six and lot 13 on either side. They'll get a little bit smaller to accommodate this change. But again, this is all private streets. And the lots are pretty much just where the building is. They extend a little bit beyond that. So these are some pretty minor changes. And because it involves so many different lots, we're going to, should this, this be okay with everybody, we'll just record these plaits to kind of supersede the previous ones. It'll be cleaner than a plat amendment. It'll be able, easier to pick up on a title search in the future. And the applicant is on the line if you have any questions for them.
Yes, we have a representative for the applicant present.
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm here to answer any questions. Jillian pretty much explained it pretty well. Our owner just, he wanted the turnaround, like you said, so, so we wouldn't have to have cars back up on the Nashville Pike, should they not be able to get into the gate. And then, like you said, we're, we're tied back into our original layout at the right of way. So there's going to be no changes in the right of way. So everything is just part of the private streets that, that will be changing.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant or for staff?
I didn't have any questions. I, I looked over this and see this as a, a big improvement. And one of the problems we run into a lot when we get, when you see gated accesses into subdivisions is that inability to make an easy turnaround. So this would be similar to, I think there's a couple of sections in Bureau of Plantation that have a similar, you know, almost cul-de-sac and with the access at the gate at the end. So it's, it's a, it's an improvement and it'll definitely help with safety. And then, you know, to comment on as, as this project gets built and starting to come alive with the landscaping along the street and the buildings, it's a, you guys have done a good job. It's a, it's a, it's a good looking product. It's a, so it's a, something I'm really happy to see.
Thank you.
I'll echo the comments that Matt said, since I live in that area with Matt, really with Smokey's guys.
Seeing no other. Think that gives you the feedback you need. We'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Looks good.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. We'll move on to our final item is zoning text amendment, amend this, Galsen zoning ordinance. Bill, you're presenting this.
Let me unmute. Yes. Commission members, this is a request of the commission to amend the zoning code. Initially, it was a request to just amend the architectural or review the architectural provisions in our code and suggest some changes based on a review by a committee that was appointed by the mayor. That committee met, started in May and finished up in August. And they saw, they met, I believe, four different times. And we presented some lengthy material for them to review and we had several opportunities for discussion about what we would like to see in the, or what they would like to see in the zoning code. So what we've done is prepared a draft ordinance here that we will be presenting to you formally in two weeks. And this reflects the recommendation of the Architectural Advisory Committee members. So initially, again, as I mentioned, it started out as a proposed change to some of the architectural provisions of the code based on, primarily based on a decision that was made by the Board of Zoning Appeals pertaining to architectural compatibility. So they dissected this quite a bit and decided actually what needed to be changed was not only portions of the architectural provisions in Article 13, but also some provisions that applied to accessory structures in Article 12. So in a nutshell, what you're seeing there on the screen is the existing code with the proposed additions recommended by the Architectural Advisory Committee shown in underline. And the language to be removed from the current code shown is strikeout text. So it's not a very long ordinance. It's pretty concise. And the Architectural Advisory Committee members didn't think that it need to be very complicated. And they made it very clear that they didn't think that the city ought to be able to, or should be creating a homeowners association or the complexity of homeowners association design guidelines to apply citywide. But they did believe that based on certain size of certain structures in, in various zoning districts, primarily these residential zoning districts, that a little more oversight might be required to ensure there's control over the size of certain structures and/or the setback of those structures. So what we had there, if we can go back to the previous one, the accessory structure one there on page three, there we go. So what they had suggested is that we have a different standard. And this would coincide with the building regulations that if you have a accessory structure of 200 square feet or less, then you're essentially allowed to build it and place that, that accessory structure as allowed for in the existing code. However, if you have an accessory structure of more than 200 square feet, which requires a building permit, then you would be required to comply with the setback requirements that are applied for a primary structure. So that again applies to all of these, primarily these residential zoning districts. In the agricultural residential district and in industrial districts, accessory structures could be placed in a front yard. Otherwise, the accessory structures would be, have to be placed in a rear side yard. That was the primary changes in that section. And then up to the next section, over to the next page, please. Okay. Article 13, this is the architectural compatibility standards. We wanted to include the R6 districts. That's a residential, high density residential districts in the requirements for regulating materials. So that those R6 districts that are not part of a master plan, and we have some of the older sections of town, are not required to attain the immaterial requirement for 76, or 70% brick or stone. The, also doesn't apply to sex accessory structures. Then the compatibility with adjacent structures also specifically calls out those exempted districts where previously it was worded a little bit differently, as you can tell there. Then further on down, on the next page, on page five. Uh, there's an alternative plan that's still available. So if the applicant wants to come in with an alternative plan, they can do so under that section there. We thought that was important to add that as well. The Planning Commission, of course, may apply building size and architectural restrictions as described in the accessory structure provision, as well as also the reference that we wanted to include in Tennessee codes that's listed there at the bottom of the page. And then the last page, I believe there's one more page there and we didn't have changes to it. So it's not a very complicated ordinance. It, it, for the few changes that we made, we did spend quite a bit of time on it. I think Mr. Harris might want to summarize the description and the feelings at least of the Architectural Advisory Committee meeting and why they didn't want to go into too much detail or why they only selected these provisions to change at this time. So Matt, I'll hand it off to you.
No, thanks. Thanks, Bill. And so the, the committee worked on this, like Bill said, for several months and, you know, probably, but I think it was more than four meetings, it felt like. But the staff initially did a really good job. We asked for some examples and things to look at in other communities. And, and so we, we looked at, you know, things what City of Franklin had done, Hendersonville, several of the cities where they had very restrictive architectural controls. You know, to kind of get a feel for, for what was possible and how, you know, how it could be implemented and those types of things. And throughout those meetings and the discussions, what, what really came out of those conversations was, you know, the reoccurring thing, I think, that kept coming up was, you know, what problem, you know, what problem has the existing ordinance created or, or where it's been an issue over the last, say, 20 years that, that, you know, is driving us to create architectural standards or, or more, or things. And really, short of the, the one issue along boat drive, there, there doesn't seem to be any, any problems out there. So the, that's where the committee really came back to more of a cleanup of the existing ordinance to, to add clarity in the future to, to exempt those as residential districts and really bring the ordinance in line with the way that the, the planning staff has been interpreting and applying it for, for many years. So that's, that's really what the driving force was on the, on that piece of it. The architectural, on the accessory structures, we, we did have quite a few conversations about, you know, the size and scope of, of, you know, tool sheds, carports, those types of, types of buildings. And, you know, where the committee came back with the recommendation there was essentially to say, you know, to summarize, you know, if you're building that, you know, 10 by 10, 10 by 15 garden shed that you bought at the Loser Home Depot, then there's really not an issue with those. But in some of these areas where, where folks have gone and put up these very large accessory structures or additional garages, the committee felt that it would be reasonable to, to say, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to build something of stature and it gets into recurring building codes, then it, it probably needs to fit inside of the building setbacks as the primary structure and not, not be as, it may be a little bit, a little bit more restrictive than where you could place those. So, so. so in the end, what the committee came back with was something that, you know, I think brings some clarity to to the ordinance, but also, you know, there was a an underlying tone or comment that came up many times that the, you know, the if if the City of Galton becomes an architecture review board for the neighborhoods who don't have an HOA or or active restricted covenances, then no matter how detailed we write a a code or a standard of compatibility, at some point, it's still subjective to what how someone wants to interpret it. And we did not want to create something that required a a lot of additional work on the the part of the city trying to interpret what complied and what didn't comply. So um, I think in a nutshell, that's kind of where we're where we're at today.
Matt, I think it looks good. I've read through it. I like it. In in essence, it it says you can't put up an industrial-looking metal-sided building in a residential neighborhood unless you apply for an alternative architectural plan. Is that correct?
Now. I'll let Bill weigh weigh in on that a little bit. Bill, you're you're more the interpreter of code than I am.
Bill, I think you're muted.
Page there. Number four, if you can. Leave it on four. Compatibility. So down here in B below. We still have the seventy percent brick and and associated accessory structures. So what what in A, we have compatibility adjacent structure. We clarified that. I mean, the second paragraph in A materials, we we have this, these certain districts here that are identified. I mean, included six uh, that are accepted from the seventy percent brick or stone. And it also includes those excess associated accessory structures. So those districts are still accepted as it was previously. In the compatibility provisions, we changed the language a little bit around and said all districts with the exception of the these identified here, these residential districts and the industrial that um, non-resi- the the following be required for residential districts, uh, buildings in those districts. So we're trying to make A and B, that's the one of the problems that we had last time, that there was some discussion as to whether or not be super suited, supersede today or vice versa. In this way, they will make them consistent with each other. So um, and on to the next page there for follow-up would be uh, on five. It says the applicant may request approval instructions or modification structures, not strictly compliance. So it's the alternative request is the the applicant may be able to vary these. And that applies not just to accessory structures, but to all structures. Uh, and that's applied for uh, in all districts and usually is applied now and applicable to certainly master planned areas. But it doesn't require someone simply because there's a brick structure on one side of a house and a wooden structure or hardy board structure on the other side to have to select one of those two materials. Where and and let me add that here because it it does mention down here in the residential infill. Residential infill is very specific to replating a subdivision within a subdivision and how that that would apply. So uh, the architectural standards are a little more restrictive when you have a plat and then you replat those sub, those lots within that subdivision. Then then those architecture would have to match what's in the existing subdivision from which it was derived.
So, yeah, I'm reading that again. B does not apply to R forty, I'm sorry, A, R forty, R twenty, R fifteen, R ten, R eight, R six.
Yeah, with the exception of those residential districts. And those are the older residential districts in town.
Right. Um, comments from other members of the commission? Well, seeing none, then I'll, I know I'll study it and read it again uh, before our next meeting several times. Thank you for all your work on it, Matt.
Thank you. Uh, you're you're welcome. So.
Um, so with that, that's the last item we have, but we have a guest speaker to um, give us a some training presentation.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have other business.
We have a couple of other business items and they're real short. Uh, boy, this is kind of a a nervy. We had a street that was platted in two different sections in the Meadow Glen at Fairway Farm subdivision. And the first phase, it was platted as Nickel Drive. And in this, and you see there on the bottom of the screen roughly. Uh, that was the first plat that was done. And then the second plat, just to the west of this and adjoining uh, the extension of Nickel Drive, they named it Bristol Drive. So in mid-block, you change the name of the streets. Obviously, that's confusing. Uh, to make it uh, even more confusing, the name Nickel Drive is a homonym to Nichols Lane. And they didn't, E nine one one office didn't discover that issue until after, of course, the plat was done. So a a month ago, we we addressed that issue and had y'all approve that. Well, now and and the street was changed from Nickel Drive to Bristol Drive the whole way through. Well, now we've been told by the E nine one one office that Bristol Drive, even though it was an approved name and available name at the time this plat was proposed and it was presented to E nine one one, they were wanting to rescind that name because the officer from, I believe, Hendersonville or Sumner County that was killed in a car accident or or replying to, I guess they were they were going to the scene of an accident. I I don't know the details of that, but anyhow, the officer's name was, last name was Bristol. So I, what they had told us in a nutshell is that they want to reserve that name to name a street after that that fallen officer. And so they want to take this street name back. So you can see how kind of a a mess this has become. And what's also happened is that that lot eleven oh eight there, I believe it is eleven oh eight, has been sold and all their documents, of course, were written as Bristol Drive. They were wanting to change the name to Myrick Lane or Myrick Drive. Hopefully, that will be solve this problem. So we'll be bringing this back as a resolution to to amend this plat to change this street name because of this unusual situation that occurred here.
Can I just ask a question, Bill, and make sure I understand? This is the, is this a neighborhood that's already built out or is this something that's platted? It has not been built yet?
It it's under construction. It's all these houses. I think, I'm not sure if any other houses have been built in this portion of the phase that you see here, except for maybe eleven oh eight. They're they're building rapidly in there. They're building quite quite rapidly. So they they could have started some other homes in there, but it it's a new subdivision. The streets have not been accepted. There's still a ways from being accepted, but.
Okay, so what I'm driving at is um, at this point, none of the, none of the properties, have there been deed transactions that have that name, that street name on them that would require people to change that? Because I think it's highly unusual that nine one one wants to reserve the naming rights of a street for the purposes that you just described. I thought nine one one only uh, stepped in and commented if there was confusion over two duplicate or similar names.
Well, this was a, again, this is really an unusual situation. I doubt this has ever happened before, but uh, but they they informed us they want to take that name and reserve that name or take it back. I think that lot eleven oh eight has been uh, closed on just recently. If you look at the previous plat, the, I guess, the slide before this one. You know, none of the street, none of the houses are the, have a address that front onto what will be called the new name that's shown up here is Nickel Drive. Those houses front, I believe, well, maybe a let ten ninety Mike, but I'm not sure if that house has been closed on or begun construction. So there's very few houses that will actually have an address on this street.
Is there any chance that we're we're causing uh, in cost to be incurred by the owner of Lot one oh eight?
Uh, possibly. I don't I don't know. And that's some concern I had. And I mentioned that we might want to before or while they were closing that they would sign off on a form indicating that the street would be changed and that they would agree to it.
Hey. This chairman.
Yes, sir.
It was Officer Spencer Bristol that was killed in line of duty and really what Hendersonville wants to reserve a street name for the city of Hendersonville after him. So that's more of this confusion.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, I I heard about it uh, on the uh, recent chamber luncheon. Uh, but it's just so county-wide, there's no confusion within the cities. Like having, you know, multiple street names in the same county just because our um, emergency response is county-wide now. It less confusion about going to which city, you know, if officers are familiar in certain areas but not others. And they, you know, it just, it just helps that way. So we had a couple of calls about, you know, stuff in different areas that, you know, was Galton or was Hendersonville? Having different names in different cities would help. So I'm glad they caught this early. So at least we can talk about it before it goes too far.
Um. Seeing no other comments, we'll move to the other uh, item. You have a Summer County Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, the other southern one is just a a brief uh, notice to the Planning Commission members that we would like for you and we will send you a link with a uh, survey that is being conducted by the consultants preparing the Summer County Parks and Recreation Plan. So there is a short survey there that you're asked to fill in some questions. And if you would wouldn't mind participating in that, we appreciate it. Uh, this will be a county-wide plan. So it's not just the unincorporated area. They're going to be involving all the cities and the inventory and all the recreation resources that exist now and potential or possibilities for in the future as uh, the whole area develops. And this will be an opportunity for the county as well as the cities to use that effort to apply for grants as well to make these improvements to meet our population demands for recreation services. So what we'll do is we'll just email you a link to that and you can participate at your own uh, desire. And that's about all I have to say on that right now. And then we can, I don't think we have any additional announcements other than next time, we're going to try to probably have uh, a brief summary of the preference survey that GNRC has been doing for the Gallatin Plan Gallatin, the twenty twenty plan update. So they will go through the results of those survey uh, that they conducted. And that will be an important tool that we will be using to develop our uh, objectives and policies for the new comp plan. That may be about a fifteen-minute presentation at the meeting.
Bill, is this the same presentation they put on the city council last week?
Yes, it would be. I I would assume very much the same thing.
Um, Bill, the only question I had before we adjourned the regular meeting and moved to our training is I was contacted by someone today uh, that had some concerns over either a his misunderstanding or miscommunication about setbacks. And I I I said I wasn't familiar with the item, but that I promised I would, you know, we would give it careful consideration and look at it. I I think you know what I'm talking about. Is that uh, for the next month's item or is that something that we're supposed to address tonight?
Uh, I'm not sure what issue that is.
Richard Jones said that he just wanted us to uh,
Oh, no, no, that's that. That's for the BZA. That's a BZA case.
Ah, okay. Thank you. Make sure I wasn't rushing over anything there. Okay. So we'll move on to, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the training and.
Okay, uh, if you want to give us about five minutes, take a quick bio break, we can uh, get the PowerPoint swapped over. I see Brad is with us. And we can do some housekeeping things if everybody wants to take a quick five-minute break and come on back.
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I didn't hear anything.